Good evening and welcome to the 1,147th Regular Meeting and Public Hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in the audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on requests for preliminary platts and/or vacating petitions. Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition is requesting a waiver of use, or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission become effective seven days after the date of adoption. Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If the Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Present.
Mrs. McHugh.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Ventura.
Here.
Karen Magnus here. Chairman Willschau.
Is here. Thank you. And also with us tonight, we have Scott Miller and Stephanie Reese from our Planning Departments. And again, I just want to remind the folks in the audience that with each of these petitions, we will start with background information from the Planning Department, then the petitioner will have an opportunity to come forward and add anything that they would like to add to the request, and then there will be an opportunity for anyone in the audience to speak for or against each of these petitions as well. So with that, we'll begin with the Public Hearing section of our agenda, item number one.
Petition 2019-07-02-11, submitted by Green Palace Reflexology, requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 11.03U of the City of Livonia Zoning Ordinance Number 543 as amended, to operate a massage establishment at 29447 Five Mile Road located on the south side of Five Mile Road between Middle Belt and Henry Ref Roads in the northeast quarter of Section 23.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Miller.
This location is located in the mid-five shopping center, which is located on the southwest corner of Five Mile Middle Belt. They would be occupying a southern unit, or a unit in the southern building. If you look at this site plan that they've given, Five Mile would be to your right, and then Middle Belt would be to the bottom. So the unit right here is cross-hatched. It would be, it's unit number four. The unit is approximately 2,928 square feet. The floor plan shows that they would have individual acupuncture rooms, a foot massage area, a chair back massage area. And they've also included some pictures here that shows kind of what they would have. There are two separation requirements for massage. They can't be within 400 feet of another massage establishment. There is no other massage establishments within 400 feet of this proposed location. They also must be 400 feet from a school, church, playground, library, things like that, and there are none of those type of facilities within 400 feet of this proposed location, and that's kind of the extent of the proposal.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there any correspondence?
Oh, sorry. I forgot something. Where are they? Oh, sorry. Yes. Okay, we have one correspondence from the Treasurer. It says, "At this time, there are no taxes due, and they are not delinquent, therefore they have no objection to proposal," and that is signed by the City Treasurer, Linda Shiel. We also have a correspondence from the Finance Department. It said, "There is no outstanding amounts receivable, general or water and sewer." They have no objections to proposal, and that is signed by Colleen Coleman, Chief Accountant. They also, we have one from the Inspection Department. This department has no objection to this petition. I trust this provides the requested information, and that's signed by Jerome Hanna, Director of Inspection, Public Safety Police. We have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. We have no objections to this proposal, and that is signed by Brian Lee, Sergeant, Traffic Bureau, Fire. They have no objections to the proposal, and that is signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal, and Engineering Department. In accordance with your request, Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposal. Proposed waiver use at this time, the existing parcel is assigning a range of addresses from 29441 to 29583 Five Mile Road, with the address of 29441 Five Mile Road assigned to the overall parcel. The existing building is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Storm and Water Main. The information submitted does not indicate any new connections to the existing utility service, so it appears that there will be no additional impacts to the existing system at this time. Should alterations to the existing service be required, the owner will need to provide plans to this department to determine if the permit is required, and that's signed by Dave Lear, Assistant City Engineer, and that's the extent of the correspondence.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Do we have any questions for our plaintiffs? I don't see any. The petitioner, I believe, is in the audience. If you would like to please come forward, ma'am, you can come to the podium. Yes. Yes, hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
We just ask for your name and address so that we have that for our record.
Okay. My name is Yan Zhao. I just like introduce my background by myself, it's okay.
Yes, what's the address for your business, or either home or per-business address, either one?
Oh, you mean my address? Sorry, my English is not very well. And, can I introduce my background first? Then you can understand what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we just need your address for our record.
Oh, okay, okay, I understand. I just want to say my previous business name is Green Palace Reflexology. I operated for six years in Lawrence, Kansas. Location is in 2449 Iowa Street, Lawrence, Kansas. Just from 2013 to 2019. And that is the, yes, very wonderful business. And it is the great way to help people, just keep people's, just keep people's body working, and relax people's muscle, refresh people's mental. That is very popular in Kansas. I am a little sad to sell my business in Lawrence, Kansas, two years ago, no, two months ago, just because my daughter, she is in, she is in University of Michigan in Arbor now, study biology. She wishes to be a doctor in the future. Yes, I'm proud of her. I must support her, so I am irising in Lawrence, Kansas, move to Michigan, yeah, with her together. So now I just, I will do the same things in Levegnia, Michigan, as in Lawrence, Kansas. I plan on operating, operating a first-class and professional reflexology business in Levegnia. I'm going to spend 50,000 US dollars to decorate, to decorate my shop, so that the customer, yes, have peaceful, comfortable, and relaxed feeling when they enter the shop. I think, yes, it's just a picture like that. And I also have picture here, this is the first one, this for the back, yeah, that way is for the back acupressure area. We want to put the three chairs there, and the second page here, yeah, this is the foot reflexology area. I like to put seven or eight seats there. And we just opened this door, and we opened the door, opened. No private room offered. Customers just close on his session.
Okay.
And I think in section, just like, I just remember Wu Xin Chinese Massage in the Laurel Park Mall, yeah, same service type like that.
Okay.
We just offered, I think we offered bigger space to the customer. 3,000 square feet is my shop size. We offered comfortable environment to the customer. I like to 50,000 US dollars to decorate, and we offered the good price to the customer. 30 minutes foot reflexology, we take 20 dollars. And 45 minutes foot reflexology, we take 30 dollars. One hour foot reflexology, we just take 39 dollars only. So, we have, yeah, bigger space and nice atmosphere, good price reflexology store, yeah, waiting for your coming. I think, guys, just take your friends and family to our shop to do the foot reflexology. After that, you can find out how you like it, how you enjoy it. And groups are welcome. We can take three people, four people, five people, or even six or seven people at the same time, as the business is growing. Business hours just from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, seven days a week.
Okay.
Yeah, so far, I have a question. Do you know what's the reflexology? Reflexology is not just a foot massage. In fact, it's much more than that. We call the reflexology is the zone therapy. Just start off with foot baths, then soak the feet in the warm water for a few minutes, make your body and feet just relax first. Then we can use the finger pressure to the acupressure point on the feet, ankles, and the legs. In traditional Chinese medicine, illness is considered as energy imbalance in the body. Reflexology just can restore balance of the body to correct problem. For example, I have some here. Sorry, can you do?
Yes, you can.
This is a reflexology chart, so, one, and just three ones.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll share.
This is a reflexology chart. If you have a stomach problem, yeah, you just, you just hold a special spot, and in the arch of the feet, and so, associated, related, related the stomach here, and use the perfect finger pressure to this area. It can affect stomach functioning. Yeah, this is true. If you have like the heart, or lung, lungs, or sometimes a colon or esophage problem, just hold this area. Yeah, apply the perfect pressure to this area. It also can affect heart, lung, or esophage, or, and so on, functioning.
Uh huh.
Yes, this is good. And I want to say, and there, there have a four, there have a four reflexology area on the sole of the feet. The first is the five toes, just related, ears, eyes, brain, neck. And the second, just the ball of the feet, just related, lungs, heart, and the shoulders. And the widest, this, this area, you can find it, you can relate it, just spleen, and this is the stomach, and the pancreas, kidney, liver, yes, a lot of it.
I think, I think we understand, you know, the benefits of it, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and I mean, the benefit of reflexology, just cleans, just you can cleanse the body of the taxing, increase the circulation, and promote the healing, yes, something benefits.
Okay, good.
And I want to say, next question, what's the acupressure? Acupressure is not massage, just remember, it's not massage. This is an ancient Chinese healing method. They just use the pressure with the finger, arm, or the elbow, to the certain meridian point on the body to relieve the pain. Traditional Chinese medicine just described, the body has an invisible lines of energy flow, called meridian, that flow up and down the body. There are 12 meridians connect to the body organ associated with the certain meridian. When these meridian points stimulate, they can release the muscular tension, and they can increase the circulation, circulation of blood, and trade emotion, mind, spirit. And just in acupressure session, you can lie fully close on a massage table, or you can sit down on the massage chair, just like there, yeah, here, yeah, sit down on the massage chairs. Just section, just from the 10 minutes to 19 minutes, just one minute for $1, like this. And we also, just a sense to remember, if you are pregnant, just, yeah, tell first before trying reflexology or acupressure, because the pressure isn't down the abdomen and some certain point on the feet or legs. Also, the pressure isn't down over the wounds, bruises, and varicose vein, or anywhere that is swollen. And for, at the beginning, four employee will be working in the building at the business hours. They should be certified by National Organization for Aging Bodywork Therapy, or licensed by the Board of Massage Safety License in Michigan. And so far, I have, I have license, I get a license from Michigan now, because this, so, I want to say, I'm trained masseuse. I'm a professional. I just want to tell, just trust me, try it. Just 30 minutes foot reflexology for $20. After that, you will feel that you are new person. You must say, yeah, amazing, yes.
All right, well, thank you. I appreciate your very comprehensive presentation. Let's see if we have some questions for you on what you've told us. Ms. Smiley.
I just want to make sure I understood you. Your daughter moved to Ann Arbor to go to medical school?
Yes, just Ann Arbor, yes.
Okay, at University of Michigan, probably? Is she at the University of Michigan?
Yes, so, I want to start career here, just with her together, yes.
Okay, so you're moving to Michigan from Kansas to be with her?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and then you did this business in Kansas from 12 to 19, is that right? From 2012 to 2019?
Oh, from 2013, yes.
13, okay, to 19, okay. And then in this, in this facility, or in your massage establishment, everyone's completely clothed, there's no private rooms?
Yes.
And you work on them through their clothing?
Yes, yes, correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for our petitioner? Anyone over here? Mr. Ventura?
Chairman, I noticed that you gave us your license from the state of Michigan that we're passing along here, and everybody's taking a look at. Will everybody that works for you in this establishment be licensed like you are?
Yes, I, yes, I heard the person should be certified or licensed by the board, or by the, yes, it should be.
And can you tell me how you get customers? Are they, do doctors prescribe your service? Are you ever paid by insurance companies?
Insurance.
How do you get customers?
Sorry.
Do you advertise?
Sorry, what's that?
How do, how do people find you?
Oh, I found them, we do the, we do the advertisement on the Google, and newspapers, yeah, yep, yeah, because we have a brochure. Yeah, they can find our business online.
So primarily from online advertising?
Yes, online, and the newspaper advertisement, and we have the brochure, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for the petitioner?
I have one more question, but for Mr. Miller.
Of course, Ms. Smiley.
This is a conditional agreement, is it not?
In?
If this were to pass, this would be a conditional agreement to only to this particular?
If that's what you condition it is, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smiley. Any other questions for the petitioner? I don't see any others. Just one moment, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this item? Okay, I don't see anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this. So I think we've heard everything that we need to hear, so it'll be now our chance to vote on this item, so, so just give us a few moments here, and we'll make our decision. Thank you for coming. A motion, well, we'll close the public hearing, and a motion would be in order.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
And Mrs. Smiley.
I'm going to make an approving resolution that this request to operate a massage establishment at 29447 Five Mile Road is hereby approved, subject to the City Council approval, in the following conditions: that this facility shall comply with all other special waiver use standards and requirements pertaining to the massage establishments as set forth in Section 11.03U of the Zoning Ordinance Number 543; that this facility shall conform to the provisions set forth in Chapter 5.49 of the Livonia Code of Ordinances pertaining to a massage establishment, and the petitioner shall not engage in any form of solicitation for business within the public right-of-way of probably Five Mile or Middle Belt?
Middle Belt, yeah.
Okay. Subject to the preceding conditions, this petition is approved for the following reasons: that the subject's site has the capacity to accommodate the proposed use, and that the proposed use is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding uses in the area. Further, the Planning Commission recommends the approval of a conditional agreement limiting this waiver use to this user only, with the provisions to extend this waiver use approval to a new user only upon the approval of the new user by the City Council.
Okay, is there support for the motion?
Support.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Mrs. Smiley, supported by Mrs. McHugh. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing no discussion. If the Secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
No.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Karen Magnus votes aye. Chairman Willschau.
Votes aye, and the motion passes. Mrs. Al, your motion is passed. It will now go on to City Council, and they'll have a hearing as well, so that's the next step for you. We wish you good luck with your, with your establishment. Thank you. And with that, we'll go on to item number two on our agenda.
And that is petition 2019-07-02-12, submitted by Zookin's Rib Shack, and requesting waiver use approval pursuant to Section 11.03H of the City of Livonia Zoning Ordinance Number 543 as amended, to utilize a Class C liquor license, which is the sale of beer, wine, and spirits for consumption on the premises, and to expand the existing food service operation to include an outdoor dining patio in connection with the operation of the full-service restaurant 33897 Five Mile Road, located on the south side of Five Mile Road between Farmington and Ashhurst Roads in the northeast quarter of Section 21.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Miller.
Zookin Rib Shack is located in Civic Center Plaza, which is located on the south side of Five Mile between Farmington and Ashhurst. Zookin occupies the end cap unit at the north end of the complex, closest to Five Mile Road. Restaurant has been in operation since 2015. Along with the Class C, as mentioned, they would like to get a outside dining patio. The site plan shows that the new patio would be, would occupy a portion of the sidewalk located on the north side of the building. The proposed patio would measure the width of the sidewalk approximately six feet wide by a length of approximately 35 to 40 feet. The capacity of the chairs and tables outside would be six patrons. Zookin's currently is limited to 48 seats for the restaurant, so the seating outside would maintain that. So during the summer months, they would bring out six seats and move the, move from the interior, and then during the months when the winter is not conclusive for outside dining, those seats would be moved back into the restaurant. The seating count of the restaurant would remain at 48 seats. Access to the patio, let me get a better picture here. This is the wall, you can see by this picture, this is the wall that the patio would be with the sidewalk. Access to the patio would be from an interior, from the interior of the restaurant would be provided by means of a new door that would be installed, installed within the confines of the patio. A wrought iron fence at a height of three feet six inches would surround the patio. There is a separation requirement for liquor licenses. They cannot be within 1,000 feet of any other such licensed establishment. And let's see if I got, if you look on this map, at the extreme east end of the shopping center is the Bench Pub, which also has a licensed, a Class C license, and that would be approximately here where my hand is. And also O'Malley's Bar and Grill, which is approximately 800 feet away, and in eastern direction also has a Class C. So this 1,000 separation would have to be waived by the City Council, and that's the extent of that.
All right, and then the correspondence?
Correspondence. We have one for the Treasurer's Department. In accordance with your request, at this time, there are no taxes due, but they are not delinquent, they are, but they are not delinquent, therefore I have no objection to proposal, and that is signed by the City Treasurer, Linda Shiel. Department of Finance, we have reviewed the above address. We have no objections to proposal, as signed by Colleen Coleman, Chief Accountant. Public Police Department, we have reviewed the plans submitted by Zookin's Rib Shack, request for waiver use approval pursuant to 1103H of the City Zoning Ordinance as amended, to utilize the Class C liquor license. After conferring with the Chief of Police, we have identified the following issues for consideration. The Bench Pub is located at 335, 653 Five Mile Road in O'Malley's Supper Spirit and Song, located at 15231 Farmington. Both hold active Class C liquor license. Both locations are well within the 1,000-foot separation requirement. Both hold active Class C liquor license, both locations as well are well within the thousand-foot separation requirement distance of the proposed site. We have no objections to the waiver being granted contingent that the primary use of the business is for dining, restaurant activities. Additionally, the waiver is limited only to this user and that the petitioner complies with all state laws, city ordinances, stipulations and conditions set by the Livonia Police Department Liquor Investigation Unit, as approved by the Chief of Police, stipulations and conditions set by the Traffic Bureau of the Livonia Police Department. And that is signed by the Chief of Police, Jeffrey, or, or for the Chief of Police, Jeffrey Ronay, Special Service Bureau. Inspection Department, this department has no rejects, no objections to the petition, and that's signed by Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. Police Department, another from just the Police Department, we have no objections to this proposal. That's signed by Brian Lee, Sergeant, Traffic Bureau. And the Fire and Rescue, this office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with this request. We have no objections to the proposal with the following stipulations. The door from the dining area to the outdoor patio must be construed as an exit point. And number two, pursuant to NFPA one oh one, life safety, life safety code four point five point three point two, and to avoid any confusion during an emergency, the door from the restaurant interior leading out to the patio must be marked as an exit featured, and, featuring an illuminating sign equipped with battery backup. Additionally, the patio must be provided with an exit gate featuring panic hardware. And all-weather exit sign must be permanently affixed to the patio gate as well, and as signed by Greg Thomas, Fire Marshal. And then the Engineering Department, in accordance with your requested, Engineer Department, the Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to proposal waiver use at this time. The existing parcel is assigned a range of addresses from three three six fifty-three to three three eight ninety-seven Five Mile Road, with the address of three three six seven five Five Mile Road assigned to the overall parcel. The existing building is currently serviced by, by public sanitary storm and water main. The information submitted does not indicate any new connections to the existing utility service, so it appears that there will be no additional impacts to the existing system at this time. And that is signed by David Lear, Assistant City Engineer, and that's the extent of the correspondence.
That was a lot, thank you, Mr. Miller. Uh, do we have any questions from our planning, for our planning staff? See anything, the petitioner, I believe, is here, if you'd like to come forward. Good evening, sir.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, as, as you heard with the last petitioner, I'll just ask for your name and address to start.
Louis Kons, address is three three eight nine seven Five Mile.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Kons. Is there anything else that you would like to add from what you've already heard so far? Stole all your thunder, huh?
Yeah, I think it's all there.
Basically, you're looking to add liquor service and patio, maybe you can explain a little bit about why you're looking to do those things?
Well, mostly it's due to a lot of the customers requesting it, so that's why I didn't kind of do it at first, but due to the request and everything, it, you know, go with food right now. We do have sit-down for, like you said, forty-eight people, a lot of them tend to take it home because they would like a beverage, so there tends to be more takeout than sit-down, so this way they would be able to stay and enjoy both versus having to hurry up and rush home and have it there.
Very good, uh, do we have any questions for our petitioner, Ms. Smiley?
You're looking more to be a restaurant that provides liquor than a bar that has ribs?
Yep, the restaurant, yes, definitely.
And then, um, and you're gonna operate the outside part from like summer, like April to?
Yeah.
October or something like that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and are your hours of operation gonna change?
If anything, maybe like an hour later, right now, we close Sunday through Thursday at eight o'clock, so we may look at like nine o'clock or so, because we do have people coming in. But the latest in Friday and Saturday may be ten or eleven, but that would be the extent.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Smiley, any other questions? Uh, we'll go with Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the patio, will that block the entire sidewalk leading behind the building?
You mean in terms of access to get by it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, is there any use of that sidewalk?
No one ever uses it, in fact.
And you're gonna put a door in where, where?
The first, the first window to the left there?
The easternmost window?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Long, any other questions for our petitioner? I don't see any other questions up here, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this? We have one person in the audience who's gonna speak, so you can take a brief seat there and we'll, we'll get you right back up here, Mr. Kons. Good evening, Mr. King.
Hey, don't worry. Steve King, three three nine five zero Coventry. Excuse me, I got the letter in the mail, because I live right across the street. And I just wanted to come and support the Zookins, they, they put a lot of money into that place. That's a real tough location, I'm telling you, I've seen a lot of things come and go in that plaza. So anything that, you know, keeps the business viable, I, I think it'd be worth considering, and so I just wanted to throw that out there.
We appreciate that, thank you for coming. All right, and if there is no one else in the audience wishing to speak, Mr. Kons, is there anything else that you wanted to add, or are you all, you're all set? We got a thumbs up from him, so we will close the public hearing and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. McHugh?
Like to offer an approving resolution that the request to utilize a Class C liquor license and to expand the existing food service operation to include an outdoor dining patio in connection with the operation of the full-service restaurant at three three eight nine seven Five Mile Road is hereby approved and subject to City Council approval for the following reasons. That the use of a Class C liquor license at this location is subject to City Council waiving the one thousand-foot separation requirement from the existing Class C licensed businesses per section ten point zero three, ten point zero three J two and nineteen point zero six one of zoning ordinance number five four three as amended. That the site for the outdoor patio is received by the Planning Commission on July eighth, two thousand nineteen, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. That the maximum customer seating count in the restaurant shall not exceed a total of forty-eight seats, including six outdoor patio seats during the summer months. Then unless approved by the proper local authority, any type of exterior advertising such as promotional flags, streamers, or sponsor vehicles designed to attract the attention of passing motorists shall be prohibited. That there shall no, that there shall be no outdoor speakers or sound equipment, including televisions, allowed at any time. That no advertising shall be permitted on any of the seating or table apparatus of the outdoor patio. And pursuant to section nineteen point one zero of ordinance number five four three, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by City Council, and unless the permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period. Further, the Planning Commission recommends the approval of a conditional agreement limiting this Class C liquor license to this user only, with the provision to extend this waiver use approval to a new user only upon approval of the new user by City Council.
Thank you, Mrs. McHugh, is there support?
Support.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Mrs. McHugh, supported by Mr. Ventura, is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mrs. McHugh?
Aye.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye, Chairman Willschau?
Votes aye, motion passes, and we'll go on to City Council with an approving recommendation. Wish you the best of luck with your additional services. And with that, that concludes the public hearing section of our agenda, we now go on to miscellaneous items, item number three.
That's the approval of the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-four capital improvement program.
And, Mr. Miller, was there any additional information you want to give us on this?
No, I don't have any other information other than the report that you received.
Okay, this is a report that is prepared by the Planning Department every, every few years, and takes a lot of time and effort on their part to get this information from all the various departments within the city, but it's used as a, a forecasting and budgeting document to assist the City Council as they do their budgeting process. So with that information, is anyone in the audience wishing to speak on that plan? I don't see anybody rushing forward to speak on the capital improvement plan, so a motion would be in order.
I'm kinda disappointed Scott's not reading this.
It would be on page sixty-one.
Is it written or just a motion to approve it?
There is a, uh, there is a resolution on page sixty-one of our packet.
Oh, jeez.
It's one of these whereas jobs.
Oh, the whereas job?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer that.
All right, Mr. Ventura, do you wanna, do you actually wanna read it?
If you'd like me to?
If you, if you want.
You can tell very, you want me to do this?
Sure, go for it.
Whereas pursuant to Michigan Planning Enabling Act PA thirty-three of two thousand and eight, the City Planning Commission is responsible for the preparation of a capital improvements program for the ensuing six years. And whereas the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-four capital improvements program, prepared through a joint effort of several city departments, has been submitted to the City Planning Commission for consideration. And whereas a duly noticed City Planning Commission public meeting was held on August thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, and whereas capital improvement program presents a realistic program to aid in the determination of a complete fiscal planning strategy for the City of Livonia. And whereas the City Planning Commission stands ready to do all things necessary to cooperate with the mayor and the City Council in maintaining a functioning program of capital improvements and capital budgeting for the City of Livonia. Therefore, be it resolved, the City Planning Commission hereby adopts the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-four capital improvements program, and be it resolved that the City Planning Commission recommends the City Council adopt this capital improvements program and use it as a guide for funding priority capital projects.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Ventura, is there support for that motion?
Support.
All right, we have support by Mrs. Smiley. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion that Mr. Ventura gave us? I don't see any, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mrs. Smiley?
Aye.
Mrs. McHugh?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye, Chairman Willschau?
Votes aye, and that motion passes. That now takes us to the pending items section of our agenda, item four.
And that's a motion to hold a public hearing pursuant to Council Resolution number one six three dash one nine and section twenty-three point zero one A of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended, to determine whether or not to amend subsection two of section two point one zero, which is the definition of bed and breakfast establishment of Article Two of the City of Livonia Ordinance number five four three as amended, to include residences marketed and offered for rent online by platforms such as Airbnb, VRBO, HomeAway, or other similar websites.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, Mr. Miller, is there any information on this one?
Not just the, um, I mean, we'll explain it better when the public, pre-hearing or the public hearing, but.
Right, we're just setting a date for it at this time. Okay, and is there any discussion on the item? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak on this item? We do have one person. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Debbie Sotzen, I live at one eight six seven two Sunset. Um, the reason I came was to make a comment because this item was in the paper, um, in a very negative sense. I also live in the subdivision, and there was a group of people that did a small survey of a neighbor stating that it was basically fear mongering and complaining that they were feeling out of control of who could come into the neighborhood of being a renter or temporary lodging. My feeling is that I live in that subdivision, live in the house that was discussed, and I'm a complete opposite of the feeling, I think it's a great thing to have. I think our world today is completely changed, and people's needs have changed of where they reside for reasons of travel. Also, income for people that do this have changed, our lives have changed in the sense of having income if you're someone that's older or have become single. And this gives them an opportunity to have someone to reside with them, to bring in an income, and also companionship. I have lived in that subdivision for thirty-two years, raised four children, and some of the comments were saying that they didn't want a lot of cars and a lot of traffic. I assure you, raising four children that were under the age of five, at one time I had five cars in my, at my home. I've had, um, children that went to Madonna and to Schoolcraft that used my home as temporary residences so they could afford to go to school, but didn't have to worry about paying for school board. In situations where coworkers, where they needed a place to stay, this gave them an opportunity. For myself, I'm a typical baby boomer, I'm at the peak of the age where there's a majority. I've raised my children, they've gone to school, don't have to worry about that, they're married. But there could be a time where I may become a widow and I need an income, or maybe a companion. I would want that opportunity to say that I have the free choice to understand who can come in my home, and it is my business if I want to take an income or not to take an income. But to have someone to put many different laws saying that, or what-if situation that could be very negative to myself or to my neighbors really just doesn't hold water. So that was my point, I wasn't really sure where this was going, I know there was stated, uh, uh, proposal from the state to say that they wanted to check locally, and I just wanted as a point to find out how this was going to process and to make sure that people all have an opportunity to input. And I didn't want it to be believed that the group that had stated that they were against it, that's the majority belief. And if there's a need to find out, I'm more than happy to survey our specific neighborhood to see, from house to house, to see how that goes. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you for your comments and for coming, uh, the process is, um, this is the beginning of the process. What the city is looking to do is to prepare a possible ordinance to regulate these types of establishments, uh, which are commonly known as Airbnb and VRBO and these other type of things. And the way this process works is we first have to set a public hearing date, and that's what this step is. So this is a really procedural kind of step that we're going through. That's why you're not gonna really hear much commentary, there's no one here to really speak on it, because we're just setting the date for the public hearing. Once that's set, uh, we will hold the public hearing on that date to discuss this. And that's really where, uh, you're gonna see people come in like yourself to give comments and to help us know what the community feels about this item. Uh, so I would encourage you to, uh, continue to follow this, look for that public hearing date, come back and speak again at that time. Once we make whatever decision we make at the Planning Commission, we're just a recommending body to the City Council, so then it will go to City Council, they'll also go through the same process. So, so there will be multiple opportunities for you to continue to follow this, to speak on this, and, and make sure that your, um, opinion is, and your thoughts are known, so. So I appreciate you coming, and, uh, like I said, you're probably not gonna see much other discussion on this tonight, but, but do keep an eye for that public hearing date, because that's what we're gonna be setting by this motion tonight. So with that, is there any other discussion on this item? I don't see anything else, uh, is there a motion to set our public hearing date?
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Smiley.
In accordance with the request of the above referenced Council Resolution adopted on May the eighth of two thousand and nineteen, City Council- adopted on May 8th, 2019, City Council has referred to the issue of amending the definition of bed and breakfast establishments to include other forms of short-term rentals in which residents are marked and offered for rent via web-based platforms such as Airbnb and VRBO and HomeAway to the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing and thereafter submit a recommendation. Staff is in support of the adoption of a resolution that will set a public hearing date for Tuesday, August 27th, 2019.
Okay, is there support for that motion?
Support.
I heard Mr. Long and Mrs. McHugh at the same time, so we're going to give it to Mrs. McHugh. Ladies first.
Can't fight tonight.
So, Mr. Long doesn't have the fight in him. So, we have a motion to set a public hearing date for August 27th. So, please come back on that date because we will be discussing it again. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, the secretary can please call the roll.
Mrs. Smiley.
Aye.
And Mrs. McHugh.
Aye.
And Mr. Long.
Aye.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Karen Magna votes aye, Chairman Willschau.
Votes aye, motion passes, the date has been set for August 27th. So, that item is taken care of, and we have one item left on our agenda.
Which is the approval of the minutes of the 1,146 public hearing and regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on July 23rd, 2019.
And I believe everyone was here for that. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Long, supported by?
Support.
Mrs. McHugh. So, a motion to approve by Mr. Long and Mrs. McHugh. I believe there will be no objection if we show six on that.
Done.
If there's no objections, then we'll show six. And that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there any other business to come before the commission at this time? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Long offered that with Mr. Ventura supporting. Again, I believe there will hopefully be no objection to adjourn the meeting tonight. So, we'll show six on that, and we will come to the end of the meeting. I'd like to thank Livonia Television staff for their contribution. And with no further business coming before the Planning Commission, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:53 PM. Good night, Livonia.